I'd like to call this meeting to order and determine if a quorum is present. Mr. Wyatt.
Here, oh, sorry.
Mr. Larson.
Here, yeah.
Mrs. Boyer, everyone's here, all right. If you are able, please stand for the pledge followed by the invocation given by Mrs. Boyer.
My father was so grateful for the opportunity to meet here tonight as the Cholo School Governing Board members. We ask you to please help us to strive to work as a group and to do what's best for the students of our district. We're thankful for our staff and all they do to provide services they do to our kids. We ask you to please be with them and our students and their families during our fall break and that they will all come back safely. We love them and we're thankful for all that we have in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Item 4.1, approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. On favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Item 6.1, approval accounts payable for your... To include student activities, September vouchers, payroll vouchers, and AP vouchers.
I move to approve as presented.
Skip minutes? Sorry, I did, I'll go back.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Approval of our meeting minutes.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second. On favor.
Which meeting minutes are these?
September special board meeting and our work-study session meeting minutes.
And I vote no.
So John Zanavroanos is in favor. Motion passes. Item 7.1, call the audience. Janelle Sterner.
Good evening. Thank you so much, board members. My name is Janelle. I live here in Cholo. And I'm a little kind of upset because just lately I've been hearing about furries on both junior high and high school. A couple of kids that are talking to me, parents that are talking to me that can't be here tonight, are mentioning that there are kids walking around the schools, definitely high school regarding face painting, spiked tails, booty shorts, fishnet stockings, more like a Halloween costume thing. And it is very distracting to the kids that are going there. They're saying it's a few, it's not a whole bunch, but they're on there. Some of the kids had gotten, the kids that have approached me have mentioned that they have been dress coded for things that they were dress coded, but the other kids aren't. That's what these kids are seeing every day. And they just don't feel that it's an appropriate area to go ahead in a learning environment if it's more like a fashion show. That is one thing, and I'm not sure if you're also aware of, maybe you are, is that Cholo from the valley, from people that I know down the valley and on the mountaintop, that there are kitty litters on the high school campus. So I don't know if you know that rumor, but that's what's going on. And that's really sad that Cholo's being known as a furry community and that there's kitty litters on there. So that's something I would hope you guys maybe could address, put it on your website, whatever's going on, so people are aware. The other thing that seems to be another issue in the next, this is only two months they've been in school, is especially in the high school, a couple of high school students have come up to me and saying they can't go to the bathroom. Reason they can't go to the bathroom, because they are having and being bombarded with kids tapping them on the shoulder, "Hey, do you have any tobacco? Hey, do you have any this? Hey, do you have any that?" So I asked the student, how does the principal, especially at the high school, I don't know about the junior high, are they doing random bathroom checks? They said, "Sort of, but not all the time." So I'm hoping that this could be addressed because this is something that, sorry, as a taxpayer, we're all taxpayers, we pay on this. This is not what I'm paying my money for, my taxes to go to a school that has things that are not being implemented in the correct way. So I really, really hope you guys really investigate to find out what's going on, especially in the bathroom. The one young student mentioned, he has to go at a certain time to go to the bathroom to be let out because otherwise he will be bombarded every single day, talk to parent. Mom said the same thing. So I really hope that you guys can squash any rumors, if there are kitties or critters or furries, is what they keep calling them, on the school campuses. I hope that also gets taken care of too. So I appreciate listening, but enough's enough and this needs to stop if this is going on. So I appreciate it. Have a good evening. Thank you.
May I ask a clarification question? Okay, I can do that. That was very confusing.
Item...
So, I'd like some more information.
Item 8.1, culinary arts presentation by Mr. Crawford from the high school.
Well, I'm William Crawford, the culinary arts teacher. I had a PowerPoint slideshow, but I'm in the middle of tailgating because they moved it from Thursday, I mean, from Friday to Thursday, so I didn't go back to my room to get it. But Superintendent St. John asked me to present kind of what the culinary arts program is doing. Some of the things that we've done recently is we've instituted where all of my Culinary One kids, once they get through a certain portion of our, of our learning program, sanitation, safety, a little bit of the equipment, they all have to, they're all required so they can work in the kitchen to get their food handler's card, which gives them an advantage when they go out and try to start getting jobs because now they've already got that with them so they can go through. Some of the things we've instituted to help get some work-based learning in is about three years ago, I actually lost a freezer. So we had to do something with all the food in it, and so we decided that we were going to do Friday breakfast. We, it's, we charge the staff, we make enough money. We do make some money for the FCCLA on it, it's a fundraiser we submit every year. But the kids get to come in and prep the food, cook the food, and then they get to serve the food in a buffet style. So they get to learn that system. And then we also started tailgating at football games where we cook a bunch of food and the community can come through and buy it, and then they get to work with the community in a, in a work-based learning. So it's not just sitting in the classroom doing things, they're actually out with the public, functioning with the public. We just had one, it wasn't until about a week and a half ago, we had some people come up from Payson who run a catering company and they're catering in Pine Top on Monday of next week during fall break. And they asked if any of the students would be willing to volunteer or go help them do the catering. We had about 14 kids that said, "Yeah, we'll go help them, they're going to go help them from about 5 to 10 o'clock" at a place in Pine Top, run their catering event. Again, more work-based learning. I think that work-based learning gives them a more realistic idea of what they're getting into rather than they, they get to sit in a classroom and not see anything. And when they, Culinary Two kids, they get to a lot more advanced. If you, if you ever get a chance, come down, we have, and I announce it to the staff, I put out an email, maybe I'll start including the school board, but they actually get into baking and pastry. We have a La Corda en Blue trained pastry chef that comes in and goes through how to make the cakes, the frostings, the candy, chocolates, you name it. She teaches them how to do it, and then they have to put on a, they have to bake a cake and frost it and decorate it, and then the staff gets to come through and look at it and grade it, and the staff gets to eat it. So we also, at the end of, besides their TSA test, which is required by the state, at the end of Culinary Two, which is the, really realistically, the state says that's when we can end our program, they have to take the food, the industry credentials, the food manager's protection card from ServSafe, which is a five-year manager's card, and if they pass it, now they've got a five-year manager card to enter into industry once they get out of high school.
How many students do you have this year?
Between Culinary Two and Culinary Three, just under 100.
Great.
All seven classes. Way we like it.
How many people do you have come in and do like what you just said?
Friday breakfast, when we do.
Show the kids how to do some of the other stuff.
Right now I only have two. She's the biggest one. I've got another guy that comes in, but he's only been in the industry about three or four years. But he comes in and helps, but she comes in for about two and a half, three weeks. Volunteers her time, she provides a lot of the materials so that the school's not having to pay for it.
It intrigues me. My son's a gourmet chef. He went to the Scottsdale Courtenay, Courtenay and Blue or?
Yeah, that's La Corda en Blue, it used to be. Now it's, they closed up all the, all the United States ones because of, I won't mention his name, president. They have to meet certain criteria if they're a privately funded school, like they're not a state university, and they don't meet it. So they closed all the ones in America.
Theirs wasn't cheap.
No, it's, where I got my bachelor's degree was from La Corda en Blue, so I know it's not cheap.
Scottsdale?
Yeah, well, I went online, it still wasn't cheap.
Interesting.
Well, I love the program and how you built it up.
Thank you.
From when you started to where it is now, it's just night and day, and thank you.
And we don't make anything, everything is made from scratch, so.
You do a great job and thank you for all you do for them.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Can you express our gratitude to those folks that come in and?
I will. I've got papers for them, the district papers, where we have to present it to the school board so you guys can sign it, acknowledging that they're here. I just haven't collected them all before I get them, bring, have them sent up so you guys can sign them and acknowledge that they're donating to the culinary arts program, so I will. Thank you.
And tell the kids we're excited for them.
Will.
Great job.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
I have to go back to tailgating.
Okay, get back to work.
Mr. Crawford?
Guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have to tell you how appreciative I am of him because I have that class, so I can't cook. So when I get that breakfast, I really like it. And it's a very impressive classroom to go into at any given time. He teaches more than just culinary, he's just an exceptional good teacher. I certainly want him to come and present to you, so.
Thank you.
Item 8.2, Karen Smith from Heinfield Meach.
Evening, governing board members. I'm excited to be with you in person this time. I know the last couple of times I've been...
Really are real.
I am real, like there's a real face here. So I'm excited to be with you this evening and excited to be in this beautiful weather of Cholo and like to go tailgate myself. I don't know what he was talking about, I'm like, oh my gosh, my stomach pains right now because I'm the girl that boil, will boil water and burn it. So I appreciate all that he was sharing that he does with the students. So this first presentation that I have for you this evening is just a quick verbal update for you on kind of what we are doing in the business office. So we've been, I want to say I was looking back, I think it's about six weeks now since I've been working with the district on various different initiatives within the business office and kind of trying to grab everything and get it all moving in the right direction. So I was going to give you a bit of an update, but the most important thing that I know is on all of your minds is the corrective action plan that we're working with the Auditor General's office on. So we are submitting that this week. So we've been feverishly pulling together all of the procedures. As part of the corrective action plan, we have to respond to the prior deficiencies. So just to kind of remind everybody of where these come from, from our 2022 audit that was done and was issued in the spring of 2023. So the fiscal year ends in June, the audit has to be submitted by March of the following year. Trying to give you a timeframe. That 2022 audit had about 33 different deficiencies on there. So the Auditor General's office has said, okay, what are we doing to improve upon these? So the corrective action plan asks not just for what is the district doing to improve upon those procedures, but also evidence that those procedures have been implemented. So call it like a mini audit where we're making selections and I'm looking at, okay, what are, what are the required procedures? And then testing some of those transactions to see, did we actually improve upon? So of those 33 areas, we've evaluated over half of them so far, and I've got some quick numbers for you. So of the 33, I found that 17 of them are corrected. So that's great news to see that. There are eight that are not corrective, corrected yet, but some of those are, like one line item is, has a complete physical inventory been done of the entire district. So every desk, chair, table, computer, you know, building, AC unit, vehicle, all of that. So that's obviously something that's going to take a little bit more time that we're planning to do this year. So that one item is a pretty intense item. But of the, of the ones that we've identified so far, we've seen that 17 of them have been corrected, eight still need to be corrected. And I'm finishing up the evaluation on eight of the items, and all eight of those are in the student attendance and membership category. So pulling all of the, the student attendance records to make sure that they were reported correctly. So we'll have that evaluation completed up tomorrow so that we can send this off to the Auditor General's office. So that's a little bit of an update on the corrective action plan. Some of the other major initiatives that we've been working on will be later in this evening's agenda with the annual financial report. So that's been a big task that we've been finishing up, that I'll give you more information during that presentation. And then many of the other procedures that I've talked with you about before, as far as federal tax remittances, state tax remittances, I'm working on getting a, a new credit card vendor in place so that we have all of the, the billings and things like that. We do currently have a request for quotations out to other audit firms to complete the 2023 audit as well as the 24 and 25. Those quotes are all due back next week. So far, received two of them back. So we'll be getting ready to award that contract, if you will, so that we can send the proposed contract to the Auditor General's office for approval so we can schedule that audit for the 23 year. But really going through this corrective action plan is preparing us for all that because we're already looking at a lot of the transactions from 23. So we're kind of preemptively doing what the external auditors will do as well so we can have a good feel for where everything is at. We've also, in addition to the annual financial report that you'll be asked to approve a little bit later this evening, we've also been working on closing out all of the 23 grants. So our Title I grant, the CTE grant that is involved with our culinary program, as well as S R II, S R II officially closed out this past Saturday on September 30th. So all of those different grants, we're in the process of doing the completion reports to the State Department of Education for those. That's a little bit of a snapshot of kind of what's been going on since I spoke with you all earlier in September. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the business services and the financial operations of the district.
When you say there were eight that has not been corrected, those are small corrections or that's something that's going to take a little more time?
So there are some that are a little bit heavy hitters. So like I said, like the physical inventory is a bigger one, so that's going to take some time to do. But our corrective action plan indicates that by the end of this fiscal year that we're in right now, they will all be corrected, so.
And when you, you sent your, you submitted your last report to the state, how long ago was that?
So we have not submitted it yet, it's being submitted this week. So it'll be going to them this week. So it was, it's due, we received the notice from them on August 30th that they were basically putting us into this corrective action plan. And it's called a 90-day corrective action plan, meaning we have 90 days to respond. But because this is the second one that the district received, the Auditor General's office cut it in half and said, "You actually only have 45 days to respond." And then they kind of shortened up that timeframe as well because we had to get it to them in time for them to review it before those 45 days were up. So, so that's going to them this week, and then we'll see how long it takes them to review it so that they can...
No idea how long that'll take.
Hard to say, it's hard to say. I know that they are, they have a number of school districts that they're working with on the same type of corrective action, like not the same items, but the, the process that's going on right now. I saw that just yesterday, they posted that two school districts were not ready for them to come in and evaluate. So I don't know how quickly they're getting to the review process. So when I give them the plan, I, I've worked with the Auditor General's office for a number of years in my, in my professional, like my firm process. So I know that in talking with them, they know that our firm is helping the district prepare this. So I'm hoping that that gives them a little sigh of relief that it's going to be complete. So it's one that they can take and not have a lot of follow-up back with the district.
It may be a while before we hear anything back from them.
Very well could be. It's very possible that, similar to what they did with the 2020 corrective action plan. So to kind of give a little historical perspective, the district's 2020 audit had probably about 45, 50 different findings. And the district received its first corrective action plan on that. The district didn't receive that corrective action plan until May of 2022. So the audit was issued, you know, that spring. So it took them a while to actually even put the district into corrective action plan. And the initial corrective action plan that was submitted by the district, the Auditor General's office said, "Well, we're about to get your next audit. We're going to wait to see what that audit says and then see whether or not we're going to keep the district in corrective action." My hope is that they don't wait until this next audit is issued because that won't be until March of this coming year, so March of 2024. I'm hoping that they'll see all the evidence that we've provided and say that the district has shown the improvement.
Going in the right direction.
Exactly, exactly.
Thank you.
When you say this week, tomorrow's?
Tomorrow's Friday.
End of the week.
Due by Friday, it'll be in by tomorrow.
Okay, so you're, it is going to be tomorrow, okay.
Yes, it'll be in by tomorrow. And like I said, I just have those last couple of items in the attendance area, which is essentially pulling various different records from Power School, comparing those to what was submitted to the Department of Education and tying out those records.
Thank you for all you've done.
We appreciate you being on board.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And keeping within the timelines, I know there was a lot to do.
We've, 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 we've still got a lot to do, but I feel like we're, we're making some great progress. Okay, well, thank you.
See you in a few minutes.
Yeah, see you in a few minutes.
Item 8.3, Superintendent Port, Mr. St. John.
Thank you. So the report that I gave you, I had added a couple of items that I'll share with you too. But I wanted to share the business office, the team building updates. So I provided that information with that Lancaster group, which we're excited for. I think they're very professional, I think they bring a ton of expertise to that topic. And you can kind of see the outline of what we'll go through in that half a day. So we have all of the people that are in the office, not necessarily tied directly with finances, like our Director of Instruction and Curriculum, but I want all of those people in that office to be a part of that. And then we have all the financial people from the sites as well. And that includes athletic, the athletic director's assistant, financial person, and the AD registrar at the high school and those people. So that'll, that'll be a good day, and then we'll review that, talk more, see where we want to go, and then kind of looking at something in February as well with that group. So it's not cheap, but they're good too, so the value's there, so that's a good thing. I shared with you the 301 compensation committee information. I don't want you to get too confused on that, and I don't know if you are or aren't because it is kind of confusing, right? What I'm trying to do there is go back to the matrix. So you, you, I shared that matrix with you, that's very much a rough draft. The big thing with, with the matrix compared to the certified schedule that we use for new staff, the problem with this, that's a good thing, but that's good for recruitment. The problem is, right, then it seems to affect the people that are here. And they go, "Well, I could make more if I'm on there," and it just hasn't worked well for us. And so we've, we've used the language, I went back and, and actually, because we didn't like that, we, we kind of fixed the problem for the people that are here. So I agree with that and everything. The problem with that is we don't really know how much money we're talking about. So from a budget standpoint, from an administrative standpoint, that's, that's not the best way to, to do things, really. The reason behind doing that though is, is just we're focused on the recruiting. It doesn't, that's the problem, is it doesn't deal with retention, which is our people that are here. So if we can kind of get back to a matrix, that, that would be helpful. The problem with that is, is now we have all of our staff, has already have these different salaries, how will that matrix affect them, at least originally? So we're still digging into that. I'm acquiring all the different information of years because you have your, that's the big thing, the experience in years that they have, and the education that they have. And different matrices can have a number of columns, in other words, that you're moving over with your education. And they can also have the number of years. It can go up to 12 years, 15 years, 20 years, 30 years, whatever. So that matrix, for example, goes to 20 and has, what, six different columns? It is a very simple, very, very simple matrix. It's a thousand dollars to move over each column, and it's 500 moving down, each and every one of them. They're not different. Most of the matrices that I'm used to have a, a different multiplier in each box. So then it's really difficult to know. Generally goes up, you make more as you move over and move down. But it's interesting, you can see what starting pay is on that matrix. It does not include 301 money, but you can see starting pay, and then you can see very end, here's the most I could do if I, most education that I can acquire. So we need to look at all our staff and just one by one, say, well, here's this person, here's how many years they have, here's their education, what do they currently have for a contract? Where would that fit on this matrix? And kind of, and see if it's kind of advantageous or, or not for that, that individual and start getting these, the numbers in our head. One example, one teacher at Nicholas that's on the compensation committee, she is a couple of hundred dollars higher than what the matrix would be, for instance. So if she gets placed on there, and we're going to try to get everybody placed on there that next year, she would, she wouldn't get the full 500, does that make sense? If she got the step down, she would make about 300. So she takes a loss for one year, that's probably not too bad, you know what I mean? And then she's, then we're good to go. So if we can kind of get everybody in that, maybe they make a couple hundred. But if it's a lot more than that, then we, I think we have a problem, right? So I guess worst-case scenario is we would stick with what we're, we've been doing, at least would be my, my advice, would stick with what we're doing and stick with this, here's what we're going to do for the certified schedule for new teachers, with that language that always says, if this benefits our people, then we will generate, we'll allow them to move. You got to set a date, you know, give them a couple of weeks because you don't want them to come back months later and say, hey. So you have a cutoff date and stuff like that. It's, it, that still works, it's just, you know, maybe you set 50 grand or some kind of number that you figure that should cover that and you're pretty safe. You still, you could still kind of budget for it. But, so I, you know, I got some mixed, I'm used to the matrix, so I think one of our neighbors does it, one neighbor doesn't. So it's a little more uni, it's more uniform, it's, it's easier to, to budget as well if we can get to the matrix. So I'm hopeful. The big thing is, we have time, I want to do a little more due diligence to check with this, and then we're going to get it out to our staff and just get the feedback. So we have months to get what, what's, what's going to happen. If we, if we want to do this, and we, and I can recommend, and you guys approve it, we don't want to have a lot of, you know, hurt morale because we didn't even know what's going on, so.
Right, if the idea is to help with retention, we should be making sure that it's actually going to be appreciated and help with retention, not...
So otherwise, it's not, let's not do it, I guess, I think. So we want to get all that feedback, and we're, so the timing's pretty good, so we're working towards that. So I wanted to share that with you. The next two things are on, on the schedule for us too, I wanted to make sure that you were aware of. There's a real big event coming up, a robotics tournament that Mr. Corey Gillespie and his crew is putting on. It's one of the biggest events, robotics events that's put on in the state of Arizona. So that's a big, big deal. So they are looking for volunteers, so good to put it out at a public meeting as well, see if we can get some volunteers. And supposedly, I don't know who did this research, but it could generate up to $100,000 for the community too. So that's a good thing for the chamber and, and good for the community as well. But it's a, that's a cool thing that they were able to put this together, and that's November 17th and 18th. And then one of my favorite events last year that I would definitely be attending is the Linden's Veterans Program that they'll put on November 7th. I don't know if it's inside or outside, I guess that'll depend on the weather. And then we had a bus that, a couple of things interesting, but we had a bus that needed some mechanical work and we weren't going to get it back. So we, we had a problem, we were going to not be able to run a route today. And so we were able to borrow a bus from Holbrook Unified. So I just wanted to thank them and let the board know that that's pretty cool that we have neighbors that would do something like that for us. And then fortunately, unfortunately and fortunately, unfortunately, we had a bus wreck, but it's not the Holbrook bus. We had an accident after school, nobody's injured, and so that's all good. But I did share that with you in a text too, but I thought I might as well share that, that's kind of interesting. We borrowed a bus and then had a bus accident. But, so it was not our, our issue and nobody was injured, so that's a good thing.
Do we have enough working buses after fall break is over?
So we, yeah, that's good, right, because it is fall break. He expects to have those two back, otherwise I would imagine there would be some kind of rental or something.
Okay.
So I asked that question, and he thinks, he's hopeful that we'll have those two back. But I mean, otherwise we do have some time to go find, you know, go a little further away if we need to or, and to get one because the other one we did take back to Holbrook. So, and then, I don't know why I didn't put this on here, but I wanted to update you that there is, we're starting now on those marquees, so that pole is actually up out at Linden. And the electricity is going in tomorrow, and the sign will be going up, I think, Monday or Tuesday. That one's going to be setting at a little bit of an angle because you really won't be able to see it except for when you're going out from town out towards Heper, just because of the way it sits and with those streets and that. And then of course, when you come in, it'll really be good for the, for the parents and the people that are at the school, which is really a big, kind of a big part of why that sign's there anyway. So to help the people that we... So to help the people that we currently have, it's good PR and all that too. But I think we're going to really like that, they can, they can show off, celebrate things their kids are doing, but they can also communicate things like the, the veterans programs and things like that. Because we all get a little frustrated sometimes, we're just not communicating. Even I didn't really even know about a couple of concerts the other night, I'm like, how do I miss that stuff? So I know you guys get frustrated, we didn't know about the rodeo. So these are going to be things that are going to help a ton. We're still waiting on one little thing, I can't remember, I think some map or something thing with the four in, in town. So I need to work with the city to, it's like, there was one thing with that I said we can't do, we won't even sign the PO unless the city signed off, as I told you, I'd work closely with them too. Lyndon's different, because it's out of town. So we were able to get the counties, you know, that paperwork done, but, so it's, it's working fine, but the, the next ones, I'm hoping are coming pretty quick. There was just one little piece of paperwork, so knock on wood, if that isn't something that all of a sudden throws a huge monkey wrench into things, but pretty excited about those signs coming up, that'll help with our communication.
I have 9.1 District Annual Financial Report for the 2223 school year, Mrs. Smith.
And I do have a PowerPoint, so let me bring this up for you real quick.
Yeah, you can see that, sometimes it'll show up here.
Okay.
Sometimes not, but they have.
Okay, but you all can see it, okay, perfect. Okay, well, good evening again, members of the governing board. As I mentioned earlier, this presentation is to present to you the annual financial report for FY '23. So just a reminder for maybe some of the viewing audience, the fiscal year for the school district runs from July 1st to June 30th, so this would be the, the last school year, that the fiscal year ended on June 30th. And this is a report that is due to the state every year by October 15th, so we're right here on October 5th to be able to provide this information to you. Attached to the governing board agenda item is both this presentation as well as the actual financial reports. The actual financial reports, the font size is probably about 1.5, so what I've attempted to do is kind of glean from that information, what's the most important information for you all to be aware of, as far as what's included in the annual financial report. But if you have any specific questions about the, the content within the report, I'm happy to answer that as well. But I'll go through the presentation and then open it up for any questions that you might have. So a little bit about what is included in the annual financial report. So in school finance, when we talk about the AFR, that is an entire annual financial report package. It includes all of our different funding sources, our maintenance and operation fund, our capital fund, various different grants, as well as some of our special revenue funds that we have. It includes a school level AFR, so this was a new requirement that was added a couple of years ago, where we take all of that district-wide financial information, and then we report it out on an individual school level as well. There is a food service AFR, so for our food service operations, we have a specific AFR that includes not just the financial information, but also the meal counts and the, the number of meals served throughout the entire year. We have a K3 annual financial report, and that's a, a much briefer report that is due actually a little bit earlier than this report, so that has already been submitted to the Department of Education. And what this includes is, within our funding formula, we have two additional, what are called add-ons, for our kindergarten through third stu, third grade students. So it's a very small add-on, but we report out on the financials for the additional add-on that's included in our operating budget. We have a CTED report that is done. As being a member of the CTED, we have to report each year that we are supplementing the existing resources, the existing financial resources within the district that we're not supplanting with those additional monies that we get for our career and technical education program. And we also have a classroom site fund narrative, just talking about the Prop 301 monies, this is essentially how do we spend our classroom site fund monies, and what goals do we have for our performance pay program? So all of that's included in this, you know, three little letters of the annual financial report. It's a pretty involved process, I'm going to tell you a little bit about what goes into actually pulling all this together. These reports are required to be approved by the governing board. Within statute, there's a requirement that we present this to the governing board. There's also a requirement in which we submit it to the Department of Education, and at the end of the presentation, I'll share with you how we're going to publish this on the district website, so that community members have access to this information as well. So how do we prepare? So really, the first step is going through all of the financial data within the district general ledger. So if you think about all of the different funding sources that the district has, each of those different funding sources has a fund within the, the larger chart of accounts. So we're reviewing all of the different revenues, we're confirming all of those revenues against the various different state reports. So we're going out to the Department of Education to see all of the funding that they've released to us, and verifying that that's what we have in our records as well. So we're reconciling all of that out. We're reviewing all of the expenditures to determine that, one, they were allowable within those funding sources, but then also, as one of the prior audit findings had, that they are coded correctly as well, because we have a state chart of accounts that we have to follow. So making sure, for example, our capital expenses are recorded as a capital expense, our salaries and benefits, things like that are all coded correctly. We're also reviewing all of our grants, we're looking at the grant allocations, the grant budgets that were approved by the grant agency, and making sure that we're within our budget limits, and that the monies that were spent were for the allowable purposes of those grants. Impact aid doesn't impact, no pun intended, impact aid impacting this district, but for districts that do receive impact aid funding, and I include that just for more information for you, that for school districts that are servicing either tribally connected students or students on military basis, there is funding provided through the federal government, so that's what the impact aid component is. And then we have a number of special revenue sources. So special revenue sources would be gifts and donations, or student activities, or the food service fund, or even the CTED fund that we have, our school facilities board funding that we get, those are all considered special revenue funds, so we report out on all of those as well. And then there's some non-financial information that's included, so, well, there's numbers associated with it, it's not information that's necessarily in our general ledger. For example, the value of all of our capital assets, our buildings, our vehicles, our computers, you know, all of those different assets. So we're reviewing and verifying all that information in our general ledger. There's some closeout that is done, I talked a little bit about this earlier in the update, that we're closing out all of our, we're verifying that all of our cash-controlled funds have a positive cash balance, tying out all those revenues. We're also doing some test work or some pre-verification on some of our programs in which we have to maintain a local level of effort. So we have to maintain a local level of effort for our special education expenditures, so that's what sped MOE is, is looking at our special education maintenance of effort. We're also looking at our, our Title I maintenance of effort, to ensure, again, that our local spending is, is being spent first, that our federal dollars are supplementing those local expenditures. We're making sure our food service program has met the required match, so when we participate in the National School Lunch Program, we have to spend a certain amount of local dollars in order to access those federal dollars. So all of those different items are being done as part of this year and closeout. And a snapshot as to what it looked like for our district's spending perspective, so what I've done here is kind of laid out the, the major categories of spending. The maintenance and operation fund is our primary operating fund, so that's the funding that we get from the state and through our property taxpayers. And that's usually about 85 to 90, 90% of that is spent on salaries and benefits, that's our people. The, the other, you know, anywhere from 10 to 12% is usually like utilities and some small supply amounts, but for the most part, our maintenance and operation budget is our people. So all of our salaries and our employer-paid benefits, health insurance, retirement, social security, Medicare, all of those different expenses. And you could see there that the district spent just over $16 million in our operating fund. And in a few minutes, I'll show you how that compared to what we budgeted as well. We have our classroom site fund, that's our Prop 301 monies. The name was officially changed two years ago when the state extended the original proposition 301. That was a voter-approved initiative back in 2001 that sunset, but our state legislature extended that. So those are the monies that we have for teacher base pay, teacher performance pay. We have our capital outlay. The capital outlay is the percentage, or the portion, excuse me, of the state general fund that is allocated to school districts for their capital needs. It's a very hot topic right now, as far as how the capital funding is going with our state. There's a capital lawsuit going on right now, that some of our school districts are suing the state, because the state has not been funding capital in the way it needs to, and you can see the dollar amount there that the district spends is not very much, when you think about the facilities and the capital needs of the district. But when you look at the very next line down, those are the, the school facility grants that the district has received for the, the various different building needs. And I will tell you that coming into Sholo and kind of taking a look at all of that and talking with Sean West of the Facilities Department, and all of the building renewal grants, you guys are tapping into every penny possible, so it's impressive to see the amount of SFB grants that are coming into the district. It's a lot of work to manage those, but it's, it's providing, when you look at what we receive from the state, that line above, from the, the normal funding formula, that's part of the state legislative, state statute funding formula on a per pupil basis versus what you're really capitalizing on, no pun intended, again, with that capital funding, but really being able to access, you know, close to $8 million to support the facility needs is, is an amazing thing. Federal and state grants, that's also a very large dollar number that you're seeing right now, $6 million. We will start to see that number go down over the next couple of years, because the COVID-related funding that we've received is starting to finish up. So we're, we're definitely starting to see the phase out of those different dollars. But that includes our Title I dollars, our IDEA dollars for our special education program, different funding sources like that. And then, as I mentioned, special revenue funds, that's a, a combination of various different funding sources that don't necessarily have a specific budget tied to it, usually more of our cash-controlled funds, like our gifts and donations and some of those other dollars that the district receives. Probably the biggest portion of that 1.4 million there is the district's school lunch program, so that's considered a special revenue program. It's not up in the federal and state grants, because it's a fund that has both federal dollars coming into it and local dollars, because you have kids who are paying for lunch, and then you have kids who are being subsidized by the federal government. So because it's a, a kind of a commingled fund, it's considered a special revenue fund. So that's probably the lion's share of what that 1.4 million is. As far as the two major levy funds that we have, that are budget-controlled funds, so our maintenance operation budget is based off of a statutorily-driven formula, that is essentially our number of students times the amount of funding on a per pupil basis that our state provides. That is funded through a combination of the state general fund and the property taxes. And property taxes are hot on everybody's mind right now, because the property tax assessments just went out, we just saw our property tax bills hit our mailboxes. So the school district receives funding from those two sources to fund the maintenance and operation budget. And then the second levy fund is our unrestricted capital outlay. So you can see here that our budget for MNO, our, our final approved budget that you all would have approved back in May, was about $21 million. As I mentioned before, we spent about $16 million, so we're anticipating a budget balance carry forward of about $5 million. And I say anticipated, because there's a little footnote there at the bottom, that the budget balance carry forward may adjust slightly, based off of the state doing any final assessments or adjustments to the budget limit, as well as if we have, when we are going through the audit, if we, you know, find that we need to do any adjustments to that, but when we have that, we're talking a fraction of a percentage, if that be the case. And in the capital outlay, we have about a $2 million budget, spent about half a million of that, so we're looking to carry over about 1.5 million of budget capacity. So what does budget capacity mean from a carryover perspective? Essentially, it allows us to kind of look at some of our different funding priorities. What are some of the things that we need to look at investing back into the district? But when looking at budget balance carry forward, it's also important to realize that that's not replenishing itself every year. So with a budget balance carry forward, kind of like, you know, you give your kids $100 and they spend 50, you tell them, don't spend that other 50 that quickly, because you're not going to get another $50 to replenish that. So as we look at how we spend our budget balance carry forward, we also need to look at kind of the long-term sustainability of that. So if, for example, if you put all of that towards salaries and benefits, a year from now, how are we going to fund those salaries and benefits? So not to say that we can't put some of it towards that, but we have to kind of look at, how are we going to sustain that? So because as we talk about a salary schedule, we want to make sure we can continue to afford that salary schedule as well. So that gives you a little bit of an idea of what we're anticipating for carry forward. And real quickly.
Question?
Yes, sure.
That carry forward, aside, aside from when you talked about the state adjusting a small percentage, right?
If, if it, if it even is adjusted.
Do they have any authority to sweep that?
No, no, not on a budget capacity. So I'll tell you that the, this, the funding formula includes budget balance carry forward as part of our components that are added into our MNO budget. So could they reduce current year funding? They could, so could they come in and say, okay, of the, the reoccurring money, let's call it 16 million for this case, could that amount go down? So within a current year. I've seen it happen once in my past 25 years, where we had a mid-year cut by the state, so it's not very common, but could that amount per pupil go down in future years? It could. But they couldn't come in and take last year's budget capacity. So we, we will see that on our budget. When I bring the budget revision forward to you later this year to revise the budget, you'll see that amount on the, the budget formula, that it gets added on to our budget capacity. When we adopt the budget in July, we don't know what our final carry forward is, because we haven't done this annual financial report. So it's an estimate, and it's a very common conservative practice to underestimate that carry forward until we see what it actually is. And then when we revise the budget, we bring in what our actual budget balance carry forward is. So you'll see that in, we, we may have to do a December revision, depending upon how the state numbers come out, but at the latest, you would see that is in the spring, when we bring the, the final budget revision back to you.
Another question. We've, we've tried to, for lack of a better term, kind of create a rainy day fund. That also is untouchable by them, I hope.
That is part of that carry forward. So what you're seeing in that carry forward is part of that rainy day fund. And it's important to have, I appreciate you bringing that up, because several years ago, our state went to a current year funding model. So what that means is, we are funded on the kids that are in our classrooms today, and it's over the average of the first 100 days. So if we are building a budget on, you know, what we're hoping for kids to say, come in and stay with us for those first 100 days, should there be a reason that kids decide to leave or families move away, our funding will go down for that. Vice versa, we have families come in, our funding will go up within a given year. But we also issue teacher contracts and staff contracts and procurement contracts with the anticipation that we're going to have this budget. So we want to have some reserves in place, so that if our enrollment does fluctuate, we don't have to fluctuate some of those contracts that we have, we don't have to consider reductions and things like that. Another unknown variable is the Arizona aggregate expenditure limitation. So I'm sure you've all heard much about AEL. If you haven't, you'll hear it from me, because it's a, it's a, it's a concern, definitely it's a long-term concern. We did have the state legislature override it for both last year, and they preemptively overwrote it for this year, but we don't have a permanent fix for that. So as we look at that, it's, it is very important that we have some, some contingency in place that if that hits, so if that was to hit, we would find out by, by March 1st of each year, if it was to hit. And I mentioned earlier that our fiscal year ends June 30th. So if we're told on March 1st that we have to cut anywhere from 15 to 20% of our budget, it's really 60% of the budget in that last quarter. So we want to have some contingency until we see that there is a fix for the AEL. And I could get on my soapbox and talk all about that, but I won't do that at this moment. But it's important that we do have some reserves in place, because of current year funding, because of the, the volatility of AEL, and the volatility of our state. So if you, if you follow any of the, the state politics and the, the state finances, there's some concerns that the state may have overspent already, when we're looking at the revenues that are coming in. So we don't want to be in a position that if the state does end up reducing our per pupil in the next school year, that we're kind of left holding the bag, that we've got something to kind of smooth that out. We also have some of our expenses that are currently in ESAR, that we need to decide, how are those coming back into the fold? Are we sustaining those? Are we continuing those? Some of those were intended to not be continued, but there are some resources and some, some of those expenditures that we've become very accustomed to, and our kids have become accustomed to those resources. So we'll have to evaluate which of those expenses will the district absorb then in the maintenance and operation fund, or maybe some of the other funding sources that we have. So does that help kind of answer a little bit of that question? So next steps? So next steps. Oh, yes, please go right ahead, Stacy.
The minimum wage, is this the last big bump this year?
No.
No, it's two.
No, that's a great question. So minimum wage, so minimum wage doesn't have a stop to the bumps. Every year, minimum wage is reevaluated. So so it's it's based off of, it's it's kind of like cost of living. It's the the CPI index from August of the the year in which we're finishing, from the August before. So two years ago, we saw a significant increase of that CPI, about nine and a half percent. So we saw a jump in our minimum wage. This year, we're seeing another jump, not as large. So I think it's going up to, I think, 1430. So there is some compensation we have to address this year because we'll have to look at minimum wage that's going up on January 1st for any of our staff who are currently below that dollar amount. That minimum wage will continue to be evaluated every year. And if that CPI increases from, so in this case, it would be August of 2023 to August of 2024. So this following August, if there is a positive number to that, then in January of '25, we'll see an increase to minimum wage. And we'll continue to see that. And the way that the the voter-approved initiative law was written is we always have, if we have a positive, it always goes up. But if we go into a recession and we have a a recession and that that number goes to a negative, minimum wage does not go down. So so we don't have any ceiling that once we hit a certain dollar amount. Like some states say, once you hit $15 an hour, your minimum wage doesn't adjust. Minimum wage will continue to adjust until a new voter initiative goes into place that caps that minimum wage.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
You made the statement that, you know, we're coming out of the COVID-related funds. Is is our percentage of carryover, is it going to continue to be about the same as it has been in recent years or is it going to start going down?
It will start going down. That's a very good question. So they're they're across the state. So the Auditor General's Office issued a report earlier this summer. It's called, we'll call it the COVID Report because it reported out on not just how school districts are spending all of their COVID-related dollars, but also what was the the unintended impact of that on school district general fund balances. So this $5 million is tempered with the fact that we did have COVID dollars for those years. So I would anticipate that we will not keep that high level of a carryforward once those COVID dollars expire because some of those expenses are going to come back into our general fund. I'm not saying all of them will. There's the district can't afford to bring all of those back into the general.
Do you have any idea what the 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 deficit's going to be as far as those funds are concerned? You just, you think every year, and the state's not going to replace any of that money with something else?
Don't see that our state in our in our current political environment is going to say, we'll backfill that. So I don't see that happening.
I like the way you say that.
I've been around for a little while. So I've worked with our state for quite some time. I would have to do a little bit further analysis to tell you how much. I'll tell you that back in the day, we used to have a requirement that we could not carry over more than 4% of our budget. So if you look at.
Who's that?
Yeah, that so that law changed probably seven or eight years ago. So not that long ago. So it wasn't in too much recent, you know, just historic history of when that changed. They lifted that wave or that requirement that you couldn't carry over more than 4%. That being said, do I think we carry over 50% of our budget? No, but they're somewhere in the middle that we need to, when we consider all of the variables such as per pupil funding, current year funding, AEL, that we need to have some reserves in place. And we'll want to identify, you know, what is that that sweet spot of what we need to sustain so we have a rainy day fund? And there's some other funding sources that we can tap into for that, but many of those are more cash-controlled funds that when the cash is gone, the cash is gone. So as we look at our our different fund reserves, we tend to kind of look at, okay, so what's like more of a a way back in the back of our mind rainy day fund that it's more of like if we have a crisis that we really need to tap into those versus what are those rainy day funds that we need to sustain on a a year-to-year basis? That we always want to have those available to us.
Thank you.
Does that help?
Yeah, it does.
I I had a question going back to the minimum wage issue.
Yes.
In the past few years, I think we've made the conscious decision that when we had to increase our minimum wage earners, we also went ahead and increased the wages of others as well. So everyone experienced that increase to avoid the compression issue.
I was just going to say.
Is that what we're going to continue doing?
So we'll be looking at that to see what's affordable. So obviously, when we talk about compensation, because that's reoccurring, once you put that into place, you can't say, oh, you're above, we're going to give it to you, but then next year, we're going to take it back. So we want to make sure that it's affordable. But what you just described is what's really kind of harnessed a lot of school districts is they haven't had the affordability to push it through. So I say like kind of push it through your schedule. So you're not just bringing the bottom up to the minimum, but you're pushing it all the way through so you don't have individuals who are possibly leapfrogging others. So so I think it is important to look at the sustainability of that, but also look at recruitment, retention, comparability of some of the surrounding districts or surrounding markets so that we can retain our staff.
Got some real challenges in the future.
So depressing.
Yes, but it's there are good challenges. I will say challenges are opportunities. So as we as we look at this, you know, the what I will tell you is is I'm I'm not sure how I can go back on the screen, but if you look at that carryforward, if you think about where the district was four or five years ago, where that was a negative number. So I would say that the district had the opportunity with the COVID dollars to really rebuild. And now we have some some funding that we can rebuild and we can do some long-range planning and we can look at what are those needs of the district. While at the same time, not kind of repeating history and getting us back in there. So as we look at this, we're not just looking at this carryforward money, but we're doing some enrollment projections. I think that in fact, that might be part of your capital plan that you're going to be talking about a little bit later. But looking at what are the enrollment projections with the applied economics demographic reports? What can we count on as far as enrollment? What does that look like for reoccurring budget capacity as well as, you know, spending some of these carryforward dollars, but keeping that contingency in place so that we we don't get ourselves in a position where we have a deficit balance?
Looking back four or five years ago, those dollars were actually worth more money than what the dollars we have nowadays.
That is true.
Maybe in the next year and a half, it's going to be worth even less.
That's a good point. Any other questions before I talk about next steps?
We jumped you to the.
You're you're good. You're good. I'm I'm happy to answer questions. I, school finance, some people ask, Karen, why do you enjoy it so much? But I could talk about it all night long and I know you've got other items on the agenda. But after your consideration of approving this this evening, we will upload this to the Department of Education. As I mentioned, it has to be uploaded to them by October 15th. I have several colleagues that say, but Karen, that's a Sunday. That's okay. It's in statute, rain or shine, Saturday or Sunday. We upload it by October 15th. And then we'll also have it published on the district website no later than November 15th. I don't anticipate it to take that long to get it published to the district website, but that's the statutory deadline of when we need to have it on the district website as well. And it is already on your board doc. So community members who are following the board meeting, they can see it now, even though it's not on the the actual website itself or the the finance information.
So glad you're here helping us.
You.
Thank you.
Happy to be here. Any other questions I can ask before you consider the action item?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Are we approving it now?
Yeah.
Okay, I make motion to approve the annual financial report for 2022-23 as presented.
I'll second. Yeah, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thanks again, Karen. Item 9.2, classified personnel employment for your approval to include transfers and substitutes. Make motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Passes. Item 9.3, classified personnel resignations, terminations, and retirements for your approval.
Motion to approve is presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 9.4, certified personnel employment for your approval. I'll make motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 9.5, certified personnel resignations, termination, there's none today, I guess. No, nothing on there. 9.6 administrative, it's administrative personnel employment for your approval. This is to waive liquidate damages for Mr. Nathan Vieira. I'll make motion to approve as presented.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Can we discuss, talk about it all? Why can't, why don't we follow our policies? Why do we have these policies if we're not going to follow them? Either get rid of the policy or follow it. I mean, what is a policy for? Drives me crazy that we don't follow our own prime, our own policies. We make a policy and then we continually go against it. I just don't understand what the point is. Either get rid of the policy or or follow the policy.
Part of the policy is that we can decide to waive it. It's part of the policy.
I'm not opposed to reviewing the policy and considering getting rid of it.
Does anybody have deja vu? I mean, we do this over and over.
That's why I kind of.
All the time.
We should relook at it as well and see if it's something we even want to pursue.
Yeah, obviously, we need to look at it.
Other question?
Let me stop. Okay, so I have a motion. Do I have a second? Are in favor of waiving it?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion passes.
I just I just remembered, I received a text, actually, from a member of the community that our speakers may not be working, our microphones. Can you hear it out there, Mrs. Marsh? Are we over the the microphone? It does. Okay, so maybe.
These are working. I think it's the TV.
Maybe it's the TV then. Okay, sounds good. I just thought of that. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Item 9.7, policy updates for your second reading. They are policies 1, 103, 1, 105, 1, 302, 3, 301, 3, 302, 3, 403, 4, 404, and 5, 410.
Move to approve all policies as presented.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 9.8, event workers' rate of pay for your approval. I make motion to approve as presented.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 9.9, SFD capital plan for the 23-24 school year for your approval.
Take a motion to approve?
Change in the acronyms for. I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 9.10, sped IEP evaluation compensation for your approval. Make motion to approve as presented.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 9.11, updated Shola Junior High student handbook for your approval. I know there is only one little change in there, wasn't there? Yeah, that's all I noticed as well. I move to approve as presented.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 9.12, student fundraising, sorry, student fundraising activity for your approval.
Move to approve the fundraising activities as presented.
I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 9.13, gifts and donations for your approval. Let me see if I can.
Motion, we approve the gifts and donations?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just send thanks to the don donors.
Yep, motion passes. Item 9.14, district superintendent replacement process. We have three different quotes. I don't know if you guys had time to look at them.
Yep.
So if you want to tonight, we can pick one of them to kind of start the process. It takes a while.
Yeah.
It's long. It's good.
Yeah.
Do we have any idea, and and maybe it's said in here and I didn't see it, what it costs to to start this process with, I guess, ASBA or what we were?
ASBA was about 75 plus plus travel, food, that kind of some expenses.
75 Gs?
Yeah, and then ASBA is a little over 10, if you look in there. And then the national organization, that RAE association, associated closer to 16. It's a little more complicated.
Didn't go far enough, sorry. I don't mean to ask stupid questions. I'll be smarter.
Hey, that national one, she did say they won't match.
I saw that in there that they would match as long as it was the same services. And it didn't seem like what they were doing was anything more than the others.
Right.
You'd have to go by.
I know.
A check, yeah.
Yeah, I I ASBA has not gotten the people in place that would do the consulting. They're still looking.
Yeah, I think when we did it last time, we did, it was, he was retiring.
He used ASBA two years ago.
We were his last district.
He was, he was retiring.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they have some other changes going on at ASBA, too, it seems like.
Right.
So anyway.
And their present, their their letter was the most, least fun to look to read through. It's hard to navigate.
There are a few other national organizations.
Not necessarily. So I only see two quotes in here. Am I missing one?
I sent that last, John, the last one I sent a little later, and they are on board docs.
Want to look at it?
We might be missing one. I didn't get that to.
They're more, but they also say that they price match. So it's the one that's more like 16, but they price match. Yeah, but they price match. So they.
They're going to go down five or six grand.
So they're, they're out of Iowa, but they have people in Arizona. These are some, these are some references, local references that they have. Where's the part where they were showing the people that would be involved?
I kind of liked the ASA's, you know, their proposal.
The simplest and easiest to understand. But I actually, the more I read the RAE one, the more I liked it.
The last one?
Yeah.
I just can't judge. That's half, that's half.
I mean, if they would do the price matching, though. Yeah, if they wouldn't do the price matching, then. Yeah.
They would be willing to come and visit, too, if you, but then that's just another month.
All the way from Iowa?
They have.
The ASA, ASA. I don't know about the other ones.
Help saying that, so.
I like that Dr. Ogilvy's on there, too.
I did, too. Dr. Ogilvy used to be involved in ASBA.
He did.
He was executive director, wasn't he? I kind of liked that, you know, seeing a familiar name.
He's with which one, ASA?
Yeah.
He used to be with ASBA.
The ASA, right.
He used to be at ASBA.
I'd like to make motion for us to to enter into contract with ASA to provide services in our search for a new superintendent.
Second.
And Paula, do you want more time to look them over?
I'm good.
No, I just don't want to, I don't want to feel like we're going with the cheapest one because we're going with the cheapest one. I'd rather.
I think they're, I think they're the ones that will know the candidates the best and be able to do the best job of kind of matching our needs to the candidates.
Got a motion in a second, then?
Yeah, but we can put this on our November meeting if you guys want. I really, I don't, I know, but I'm sure I don't want to. Pick one if you.
We also, if they, if anyone wants some more time, we could give me in a short over the phone meeting to next week to just, so that we don't lose too much time. If you're not ready right now, so we don't, because I, yeah, I don't want to wait another month.
I'm okay. I just, we don't, we don't get the, we don't get the opportunity to discuss this amongst ourselves until this. So I'm interested in hearing what everybody's thoughts are, why, you know, why you feel like.
I mean, we can, we can share our thoughts now, right?
One month. That's one I asked.
Yeah. I think ASBA is doing a lot of transition right now, and they won't, for right now, it's not the right time to have them do it. But ASA, I think they would know, they would be familiar with our district, they'd be familiar with kind of the candidates. I did kind of like the, the more I looked at the other one, the national one, the more I liked it. Some of the people they have that are local to Arizona were kind of impressive. But again, it is more expensive.
Walk me through the procedure. They would come up with how many candidates for our consideration?
They'd float it nationwide, right?
And we'd set up what we're looking for.
Yeah, first they would meet with us, and we could potentially even have community meetings to kind of develop what are, what we're looking for in a candidate. And then they would go out and do the advertising and set up the applications, and they would take the applications and get, you know, kind of cut them down to applications to present to us. And then we'd be able to look at those, decide, and decide who we want to interview, the first round of interviewing, which would be, you know, online.
What if, what if there's somebody that we're interested that doesn't make their top five or 10 or whatever?
I mean, we could tell them to make them on that. Like, if you know someone who applied, and you want to make sure we see their application, we could probably just tell them that. To that extent, yeah.
They gave quite a few to go through the last two times that we've done this. It wasn't like they just looked at them and said, these are the four people. It was quite a lengthy process.
I think more like eight to 10 that they'd give us for that first round, right?
But if one of us has a question that one, somebody didn't make the eight or 10, we can still bring those people in for consideration?
We're so in charge.
Yeah.
That's what I'm asking.
It's our search.
Yeah.
It's the board's search. That's what policy says.
They're just doing a lot of the groundwork. I don't actually want us in there putting things on the websites and stuff.
That'll work.
And it sounds like you guys need to decide if it's ASA or RAE's, or who you want to go with. I know Kelly made the motion, but-
Can I second it?
I mean, I'm happy once, once I've been explained to a little bit, so.
Yeah, I like the process-
I'd like to move forward with it.
Yeah, I like the process that they have, you know, and they are working with us. And we're working with them and letting them know the criteria that we're looking for, and special characteristics, you know, of somebody. So I, I think in reviewing it, I felt like it was a pretty good process.
Their materials was pretty simple and to the point, too, which is-
I like simple and to the point.
Yeah, me, too. Me, too.
Had all the important information in there, with not a lot of extra fancy stuff.
Very straightforward.
Cool.
I stand by my motion. You stand by your second, Mila Vista?
I stand by my second.
You have anything else, John? All in favor of using ASA as our superintendent's search? Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes.
So who will be reaching out? Will you, Stacy, or will you, Mr. St. John's?
Tomorrow.
Okay, cool.
Well, pretty busy day tomorrow. Might end up being Monday.
Okay, great, thank you.
9.15, future board agenda items. Can we get the policy on there?
Yeah, I already wrote that down. The liquidated damages, yeah.
I also had, I would like us to look at our contracts and our work agreements for our next school year. I just want to make sure, like, we have incidentals included on those agreements. And I know that there's been just some issues in the past, so I just want to ensure that they have them. And I also just would like to make sure that our attorney's looking at them also, and that they're just, you know-
Oh, I just recently charged our HR to work with our attorney to get those, that taken care of.
You have? Or are you asking me? Okay, very good. I did not know that. So I'm glad to hear it. I look forward to seeing what the results are. Thank you.
9.16, duties and district superintendent related matters for consideration.
I'd like to motion that we move into an executive session so we could discuss that.
Second thing? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Before my PIA card. You have your name on it? Oh, did some of them not?
I'll entertain a motion to leave executive session.
Slow motion.
Second on favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 10, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second on favor.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thanks everybody.